Secretary is in the process of turning on the audio visual, so as soon as she comes back into the room, we will formally begin. I would, oh, here she is. Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For tonight's meeting, two of our regular members are absent, so the two alternates will be voting members for this evening. Christine and Paul Lay. For those of you who are new to the procedures here, we'll take the items in the order in which they appear on the agenda. Copies of the agenda are available in the tray next to our council's desk. In each case, we will, as we go through, we will ask the applicants to come forward, to be sworn in, and to very briefly state what the reason for their application to the ZBA is. That point, the members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions about the application. Once the members of the board have asked the questions that they have, the floor will be open for comment from any member of the public. The members of the public have to be sworn in, and we would ask that they limit their comments to that particular application and that application only. When that is finished, we will close the public hearing, move on to the next item on the agenda. When we've held and closed all of the public hearings, we'll return to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. During this part of the meeting, there will be no further input from the public, but you are, of course, free to stay and listen to our deliberations. In virtually all cases, we will then take a vote on the application. If you decide not to wait for the deliberations, you can call the zoning department in the morning and find out the action that the board took. Okay. The first item on our agenda is an item that's been adjourned, the Rutberg-Breslow Personal Injury Law, 3344 Route 9 North Road. Is there anyone? Ah, okay, very good.
Good evening.
Okay, so if you'd state your name into the microphone and be sworn in, please.
I'm Marty Rutberg from Rutberg-Breslow.
Mr. Rutberg, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening.
Good evening.
Your item has been before us for several months, and we have a fairly thick packet of materials, so you don't need to rehearse everything.
I'm not. I think that I'm really just here to bring you the photos that you asked for, the three renderings showing what exists, the whole building, front side, and then a rendering done by computer, I guess fifty percent of the way in between, and then the rendering showing it at exactly fifty feet. The only apology I have is that my sign man, from whom I just picked these up, only left me with two sets. I wanted to bring each of you a set, but if I may hand in the two.
Actually, if we just start one at each end, and we'll have a look.
I would go back to my office and make copies for everybody if necessary.
I think there's a matter where we can simply have a look and move on.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll wait a couple of minutes, and then I'll ask if there are questions from the board.
Jim? Do all of these have all of the signs? Or is it, it looks like everybody's shrunk down. Is that, or just your sign?
No, just my sign.
Yeah, the top two are as is. Okay. Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I would just like to bring myself up to date again. My notes say that it's exactly the same sign that was there before. The only thing you changed was Breslow, right?
It went from Basso to Breslow. Everything else was already there.
Was already there.
Yes.
So what you did was you put Breslow there to match what was already there.
Right, necessarily the same size lettering as the B in Basso was and all the Rutberg letters are, right.
I have no other question.
Okay. Art?
I'm good for right now, thank you.
Okay. I would, my only question, and I think the answer, I think I know the answer, but I'd better just be clear. In the two renderings that show smaller than the actual sign, I noticed there, essentially in black letters.
Right.
What you have up there is gold.
Right, the computer just did it in black. I don't know. That's from my sign man.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. I just wanted to thank you for supplying these. It's a big help to us.
Okay.
Paul?
You know, I recuse myself on this one.
Okay. Phyllis?
Did we get clarification on the other two on that building?
In terms of what?
Approvals and what they're.
Okay, all right. What I, what.
Nothing I approved.
Actually, this probably is a good time for me to tell you what I know, which is admittedly a little incomplete. As far as I know, and I've checked with the zoning administrator, the top two signs have not received any variances. The original version in 2012, if you go back to a photograph that was taken by the assessor's office and available on parcel access, in 2012, the building had only two signs. At the top, it just said "Prime," and that was less than 50 square feet, so it complied with the code. The second sign, the Dennis Kenny, was not there, and the sign at the bottom simply had Rutberg, and that was either, that was very close to the limit of our sign ordinance.
Those are the same, those are the same letters Rutberg that are there now.
Yes, right. But since it was shorter, it actually was about half, so it was approximately 50 square feet, which is what the code required. We do not have any official measurements of the existing signs. Now, based on the photographs, and I took some measurements, and these are, you know, I tried to go back into my previous existence as a physicist to do the scaling correctly. I tried to measure carefully. According to my estimates, the prime management, the prime wealth management sign measures 94 square feet. Okay, so that's almost twice what the code allows. The Dennis Kenny sign measures somewhat slightly less than 75 square feet, so that's fifty percent above what the code requires. And the proposal that Mr. Rutberg has before us calls for a sign that is 107 square feet. So the three signs are roughly 95 square feet, 75 square feet, and 107 square feet. Now, there's another factor here, too, and that's that the facade space on which the signs are mounted are unequal. The bottom sign where Mr. Rutberg is located, or his sign is located, excuse me, you're actually located right here.
Sometimes I feel like I'm located in that way.
I can understand that. The bottom facade is 64 inches wide. The middle facade is 55 inches wide, and the top facade is 46 inches wide. So in a sense, what's being proposed here, the largest of the three signs, Mr. Rutberg's at 107 square feet, is occupying the largest stripe of facade. The middle, the smallest of the signs, the Dennis Kenny, is actually occupying the middle, and prime management is actually on the smallest of the three facade stripes. That is the best data that I can give you right now. I have asked, and apparently no onsite measurement numbers exist.
That's actually very helpful. Also, just as a reminder, the county recommends denial, so we would need a majority plus one.
Is that?
That was my note from.
Act One?
Act One.
I can't, I honestly don't remember.
There was a letter.
That's what I wrote, so.
They've indicated they would withdraw that, but they've indicated a lot of things.
Okay.
I appreciate you pointing out the size of the platform that each sign is on. It's that proportionality that I tried to address initially, and it carries over into Mike's sign up above. His space, top to bottom, I believe, is the same as mine. It's wider than the other two.
Yeah, well, and.
Higher.
It's this notion of how things fit into kind of the existing space that is one of the reasons why we've asked you to provide this.
I appreciate it.
Kind of three, three different scenarios. That was a long answer to a very short question. Phyllis, I'm sorry. Continue.
No, it was, it was like really helpful. So how does that impact, if in any way, what we're discussing this evening?
Well, I think this is just, these are some of the factors that we need to weigh. I mean, as, you know, as always, it, you know, it's the benefit to the applicant versus the.
Right.
The impact on the neighborhood and on similar situations. So, you know, I don't think it tells us what to do, but it's, I think, part of the kind of body of information we need to weigh.
Okay. No further questions.
Harmon?
Yes.
You need to speak into the story.
The county is recommending denial on this, and we don't have the votes to approve. What happens to Mr. Rutberg's sign?
Well, okay, so as it stands, there are, there will be six people voting. There's one recusal. And so if, if indeed the county has advised against this, and I honestly don't remember, but I will, I'll take people's word for it, would mean we would need a majority plus one.
Right, I understand that.
So I.
Essentially, I mean, if you don't get it, then it's a denial. I mean, the other option would be.
So a majority plus one would mean we would need four votes to approve?
Right, as a seven-person.
No, six.
Six, no, it's of the whole board.
Of the whole board?
Yes, so the other option would be to wait till you have a full board, if you wanted to wait a month, if you thought it wasn't.
So we would need five votes to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and.
My question was, though.
If it was not approved, it would be denied.
Okay, so then what happens to Mr. Rutberg's existing sign?
It would be in violation. He would either have to take it down or modify it and reapply.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that'll be up to the zoning administrator, what happens to the sign in the town.
Okay.
Jim, I've got a question, since I kind of held off before, and it's probably directed both you and to Brian. We have three signs here that are noncompliance. Okay, these have been up for a long time, and it's our duty as the board to make sure that whenever we can, people are in compliance. And we're getting more and more signs that go up, and people say, "I didn't know," or "the sign company didn't know," and we do nothing to protect, essentially the little guy in town that follows the rules. So if we deny this one, should we not, can we not go back and do something about the other ones that are in violation?
I hate to be a kind of parliamentary procedure weasel on this one, but I'm afraid I have to be, and that, that our rules say that we can consider only things that are on the agenda. And it's really only the Rutberg sign that's on the agenda. I fully appreciate your comments, and we are, of course, you know, we've always been aware of precedents and tried to keep some kind of uniformity, but in this particular case, I think, you know, we have to follow what I think is a pretty narrow reading.
As with, as with previous applications, we should focus on Mr. Rutberg's sign and hope or speak with Sarah in regards to the other signs, and then it's up to her to initially address that, and then they'll probably come in front of you at a later date.
Okay, that works. Okay. Our secretary Sandy, thank you, has very quickly found the county's letter. I won't rehearse all of it. The bottom line is that, let's see, the, there's a massive facade that the applicant noted elsewhere. The entire building, including the sign, is readily available, visible from Route 9. Photographs provided by the applicant show that the existing Rutberg-Basso Personal Injury Law sign is considerably larger than the sign above it, which includes more information without any loss of visibility. The applicant has not demonstrated the need for a variance allowing a sign size more than twice the dimensions permitted by the town's own zoning law. For these reasons, our department recommends that the board not grant the requested variance for the proposed sign. If the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires that it do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board, and that it notify us of the reasons for its decision. Okay, all right, thank you. So that's, that's the county. Mr. Rutberg, I don't know if you have any comments to add after.
Two things very, very, very quickly. I don't want to keep you, you have a full agenda. With speaking of the three signs, because they're vertically, obviously, there are four signs there. Mike obviously got a variance. He wouldn't do anything without applying. I applied. The other two people didn't apply at all, but I'm not trying to get anybody in hot water. The point is that if you consider the size of his sign, too, it just further puts things into perspective of how the building facade is working overall. Secondly, and lastly, the person that wrote that letter for the county was literally, I'm told, on her last day of work when she wrote it. And I'm told that this whole issue, and this isn't the area of law I practice, you have very learned counsel here, is somewhat of a political football between the county and its towns, that the county never wants to be put in the position of saying okay to something that doesn't meet code. The towns never want to be put in the position of being either kicked around by the county or going against something that the county said. Mr. Tancredi tells me one thing, Mr. Molinaro tells me another. I just throw myself to your good judgment in this, and if you think it wise, because the county did tell me that on reconsideration, they would be willing to possibly withdraw that recommendation, if you adjourned it a month, I would go ask them if they really want to do it. I don't know if they can. I don't know who's bailiwick that falls into now. But that's in your good judgment.
Okay. I would, the only other thing I want to add into this is that you have in your packet a staff report back in May, which essentially says that the board should look at the three different renderings, but otherwise has no particular objection to the application. So the staff report doesn't explicitly recommend approving the sign, but does note in its findings that it appears to fit with the building and the site. Okay, so, all right. I think, let me, let me just, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this application? Okay, fine, all right. Seems to me there are two things we can do. We can either close the public hearing and go directly to the deliberation, or we can adjourn this for another month, both so that we have time to look at the renderings that we've been given, but also if, you know, the county wishes to amend their recommendation. I don't, I have no idea how that process works, don't pretend to. So I think that's, seems to me those are the two choices before us. I don't know, does anybody have another option?
I would, I would be in favor of adjourning it another month and to see what the county has to say, because it's not as though he was trying to open a business or anything. The sign is there, it's not going to affect his business, so.
I would attend, I tend to agree with that, but any.
I'm good with adjournment.
I think we should give him a full board.
Well, that, actually, that's another reason. We've got six.
That's a good point.
Yeah. All right, I think that's fair. Any objections? Okay, in that case, I move that we adjourn item number one to the October meeting, which will be October 20th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and there's one recusal.
That's a Monday also?
Uh, yeah.
Always Monday.
Always Monday.
Think of it as the highlight of the week. Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, well, thank you very much for bringing in the new information. Item number two, 51 Fairview Corporation, 5150 through Fairview Avenue.
The adjournment.
Okay, the applicant has requested an adjournment, so I move that item number two be adjourned to the.
November 10th.
November 10th meeting.
Is this Fairview?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, if there's no objection or comments.
Yeah, what if they don't show that?
Sandy, did they?
No.
When they were here last, there were a lot of, I think, legal and financial issues with the property, and I suspect those are being sorted out.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to adjourn until the November meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the adjournment is approved by a vote of five to two. Okay. Item number three, Tom and Nancy Russ, 27 Regency Drive, and I'm told they are not present, and I guess the zoning department has been in contact, and we've been told that they don't wish to pursue this.
Okay.
So what I would, I would, I would move that we dismiss item number three without prejudice.
Second?
So if they, if they wish to come back, they're certainly free to. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recusals. Item number four, Sleepy's, 2586 2600 South Road, otherwise known as Yipsy Plaza.
Hi, Daniel Vaughn with NYSE Signs. I'm here to represent Sleepy's.
What was your last name?
Vaughn, D-A-U-G-H-N.
Mr. Vaughn, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. You can have a seat if you like. Just make sure that you speak into the microphone.
Okay.
We have your application in front of us with visual renderings of the signs that are being proposed. Is that correct?
No changes.
Okay. Christine, any, or, Christine, yes. I'm sorry, long day.
No questions, no.
Betty?
No, I have no questions. I'm always happy when an application comes in for a vacant building, and the county says.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Art?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I guess my question may be just as much for Brian as it is for anyone else. Now, the variance is to allow a second wall sign. Okay, so they're entitled to one wall sign.
Mm-hmm.
So which, which one is by right and which one is by variance?
The one facing into the plaza is by right, and the one facing nine is by variance.
Okay, okay.
I think, Jim, I think why you're questioning that is because if for some reason the vote, right, it was not approved tonight, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have one on the, we just, we just assume, because we look at signs a lot, that you would want a sign on Route 9 instead of in the plaza first.
Correct.
That's the only reason why.
For obvious reasons, yeah.
All signs are under 100 square feet.
Right.
Yipsy Plaza.
And indeed, the.
They were in another place.
The one that is facing.
Yeah.
Route 9 is slightly larger than the other one.
It's 80s. I think it's 80s.
Five.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I think we're going south.
Jim, I've got a question.
Yes.
Both 85, what's.
The other one.
The one facing south is 44 square feet.
Correct.
Roughly, and the one facing Route 9 is a little, little short of 80 square feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a building.
Though the, the one facing Route 9 has, in fact, fewer letters, because it just says.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay. Paul, any questions?
No, I have any questions.
North end.
Uh, Phyllis?
Um, just wondering what's going to happen to the old Sleepy's space?
I am not sure, I couldn't tell you that.
Okay, and you're going into where Blockbuster?
Correct, and where Blockbuster used to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Carmen?
No questions.
Um, I, I, I tried to look, but I couldn't find it, but th- these two signs, in effect, replace signs that Blockbuster had had.
Correct, Blockbuster had a sign on that side about the same size, too.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't find the exact numbers, but the, but the idea is that Blockbuster had two signs.
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this application?
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Will you have the neon Sleepy's sign in the windows as well?
Um, no, I don't believe there are signs going in the windows. Um, we do have an application for some temporary banners, grand opening banners, um, that will obviously come down in a short period of time after, but there are no, no neon signs in the window.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, and there's no one in the audience, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much. Item five, Patrick and Denise O'Donohue, 61 Crestwood Boulevard. Is there someone here representing 61 Crestwood Boulevard? Okay, um, let's just pass over, we'll come back at the end, um, could be people are just delayed getting here. Item six, Paul Speedling, 6 Raker Road, good evening.
Hi, my name is Paul Speedling.
Mr. Speedling, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, please, have a seat, and, um, if you could just sort of briefly describe, um, what you're, what you're applying for.
I'm requesting a variance to build a deck on my existing home, uh, the deck's going to extend out in line with the side of my house, because the house sits at an angle on the yard, it's going to, uh, end up like three feet from the property line.
Okay.
The existing house is six feet from the line, I got a variance several years ago for that.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Betty?
Well, I, I have to wonder, um, the deck is big, like, really big.
Yes.
So, and, and it goes out kind of to the side, if it stayed in line with the porch, I guess it would make sense to me, but it kind of goes that way.
Right.
I guess we have some reason for that.
Well, if it stays in line with the porch, it goes towards, closer to the property line, and extends out over a steep, steeper sloped area of the yard, which really isn't usable for anything, except planting stuff on it.
I don't know.
All right, I'll wait till it goes around.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm just looking at the unusual design, but that's not our question. But if you made it, oh, never mind, no, no questions.
Well, okay, I,
No questions.
I, I, I,
You're probably looking at the same.
I might have an idea of what you're asking, so let me, let me just make it explicit. Um, I mean, the, the part that is closest to the property line is the little kind of leg of the L
Right.
that sticks out, and then a rounded end to it.
Right.
Is there a reason why you need that configuration?
Just because it's over that hilly part, um, it's the design my wife came up with.
Okay.
It's, the deck is going to step down, it's going to come out about 10 feet from the porch.
Okay.
Step down, the larger part of the deck will be at ground level, and then the extended part will go out over the hill, but that steps down also.
Okay, okay. All right, I, you know, I, I think the reason that we're pursuing this is, I don't pretend to be a deck architect, your, your wife is much better at that than I am, but, um, according to the, to the, to the rules that we, that we have to apply here, um, we're, we're to grant the minimum variance that, um, that satisfies the applicant's needs.
Right.
And, so I guess the question is, you know, does it really need to be that big, is there some particular function of that extension that you, you know, that's going to be of real benefit to you?
Well, just that it'll give the, give us the use of the yard that's sloped, uh.
Okay.
Jim, can I?
Yeah.
But even if we came back and got that overlook at that point that we're talking about,
Right.
it looks like it's still going to be within
I didn't.
four feet, and we're only talking, I'm guessing, is that, did you ever measure?
It, it,
step back to where the, that rounded part juts out? I mean, you're, you're already six feet from the line at the edge of the present porch.
Right, no, I think,
You wander down, but it looks like it's only going to pick up maybe a foot, so I'm,
I, I think you raise a good point.
I don't know what we're, I, You can't move the deck to the other, toward the house more, right, versus the garage, that wouldn't, that would interfere with your usage of the yard. For a second, that's.
Well, the design now is to go over that hill, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
I believe he's trying to make, uh, best use, possible use
Right, the property.
of the flatter area of the,
Right, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, that, which is, you know, it's perfectly, perfectly legitimate. Um, Paul?
Whose fence is along that line?
That's my fence.
Sure.
Okay, it's a solid wood fence, right.
Doesn't matter what we do.
And, um, how high is that fence?
Six foot.
And the deck will be at ground level or just above ground level?
At the part that juts out?
No, the whole, the major part.
The major part, the, the part, um, yeah, the major part will be ground level.
So how much between the top of the deck and the top of the fence for the most, for the majority of it? For the bigger part of the deck?
Oh. I'm not sure, I didn't measure that.
Four or five feet, or?
Probably four feet.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, uh, if there are no other questions from the board, uh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 6 Raker Road? All right, seeing none, if there are no further questions, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, Richard Jackson, 12 Flamingo Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you, yeah, well, actually,
Just missing.
There, there are two microphones, that's, either one, okay, there.
Good evening.
And your name?
Robert Lutz, from DBS Remodel.
Mr. Lutz, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before we begin, was this advertised as, oh, I'm, I withdraw that, never mind, never mind, sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, and, um, I understand you're building, or propose to build in addition to the house.
Right, the homeowners are interested in expanding the backside of their home, and even when we're looking at design, we're implementing to, implementing it to stay within the outside walls of the house, and the home currently sits 10 and 15 feet on their side setbacks to the existing property line, so we actually worked to design it because they had adequate setback to the rear, to make sure everything that expanded went in line with the home as to not impede, and then when we filed, I guess we learned that there was a reform, then that requires 20 feet.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Betty?
Um, this rendering that you gave us, is this the new?
The new part would be like the darker shaded wall line.
That was, okay, I had it backwards, so.
Ah, okay.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, Art?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, um, Paul?
No questions.
Phyllis?
The new part of the house will match the old part of the house?
That's correct, actually, the whole exterior will be cosmetically architected, it'll all get new siding, new roofing, so aesthetically, it's going to look like it was always,
It was always there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, uh, if there are no other questions from members of the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 12 Flamingo Drive? Yes, ma'am.
My name is,
You, you, you need to come up, um, state your name for the record, and you have to be sworn in, one of the rules of the ZBA is that we have to have sworn testimony.
Does that one work?
I think so, let's see.
My name is Patricia Pinkney, I live at 31 Laughin Lane in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Bentley, you said?
Pinkney.
Oh, Pinkney, I'm sorry.
Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, I just have a question
Yes.
of the board. Um, I wondered, um, in listening to, um, previous applications,
Yeah.
I wondered if, uh, the neighboring property owners, um, have been consulted, and as, and if so, um, why not, and, um, I just, I just can't.
I, I, I think I'll let our secretary explain what the process is.
Okay. I send out the legal notice, and it goes to a 200, to a 200-foot buffer for any property that surrounds this home. Uh-huh. So the neighbors have been, and it's been put in the paper, legal section 10, prior to the meeting.
Yeah, it's published in the Poughkeepsie Journal,
I just wondered about that.
And then every property owner within 200 feet gets a letter stating what the application is, and notify, notifying them that there's going to be a public hearing, and that they are entitled to come and make comments.
Okay.
That's with all applications.
Yeah.
Pardon?
That's with all applications.
Yeah, general rule.
I, I know, um, we had, uh, not a problem, but our next door neighbor had applied for zoning, um, and, um, we had to write, uh, our approval.
Um,
This was quite a while ago, but that's why I couldn't help but wonder.
Okay, that may have been a procedure in the past, it certainly hasn't been for,
Okay, I know this was maybe about 15 years ago, about, maybe a little longer.
Okay, okay. Um, now typically, it's a, it's a process where, where we inform people, and then it's up to them whether or not they want to come and, you know.
I, I just questioned that, I thank you.
Okay, certainly, certainly, thank you for, for asking, um, people, you know, unless you're involved in this, you, you, people don't necessarily know what the process is, so
Sure.
that clarified it. Okay, um, there are no other comments from the public, um, any further questions from the board? Um, is there a motion to adjourn, or to, uh, close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Mm-hmm. Item eight, Anthony Battini, 47 Kingwood Drive, um, I just note on the agenda and in anything else, um, the address is Kingwood Drive, not Boulevard.
Right.
It's a minor, a minor issue, but we'll just, okay.
Was it noticed properly?
Yeah, I think so.
Good evening.
So state your name, please.
I'm, uh, Bob Juliano, J-U-L-I-A-N-O, and I'm, uh, representing Rick Battini.
And you, please have a seat.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Juliano, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, um, so you're overseeing a fairly extensive project.
Right.
Um, the, the, the variance in question o- only concerns the garage, so maybe you could tell us a little bit
That's correct.
about what's happening there.
That's correct. Um, as you know, we had, we have building permits out for the, the majority of, well, all of the, uh, building construction that's going on in the main house, and the heating system, electrical, plumbing, the house was totally renovated, uh, the house was built in 1966, the garage existed in 1966, and, uh, at this time, uh, they made a small change to the footprint of the garage with, uh, as you can see, I gave you the plans there, with the, uh, pool, there's like a little jog out in the back, not affecting the lot line at that point, and also on top, there is going to be, uh, a kind of like a facade with a deck, a parapet, and where he can utilize the property, it's kind of like that last gentleman just came up, the property had, is, it just slopes down in the back, so he's using the deck area, you know, the deck area and the, uh, facade of the garage to, um, to have more living space outside. That's basically it, but we have all permits in place, and, including the inside of the garage as well.
Okay. Um, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I'm not right there.
Art?
No, thank you.
Okay, so the variance is, is actually for a structure that's always, always been there.
That's, that's correct.
And it's always been the same distance from the property line.
That's absolutely correct.
So there's, there's, there's nothing new that's really being added on that
No.
the, the west side, I guess.
Exactly, actually, the footprint is the same, um, but going up, you know, now that he's going to use the roof, so to speak, you know, as a, as a deck area, uh, legally it would change to go to a variance, and this was legally non-conforming in the past.
Okay.
So we want to bring it up to conformance.
Okay.
So that's why, Brian, technically, the, the variance is for the rooftop deck, not for the garage itself?
Well, okay, there's, there is a, a bit of a discrepancy in some of the documents about the distance, now,
Okay.
um, in, in, in the application as it's printed, um, it's to allow an attached garage to be located 10 feet from the side lot line, in, in some of the documents that have been submitted, um, it appears that the garage is not that, in fact, not that close to the line, it's, it's closer to 12 feet.
That's correct, that's correct.
Um, and, um, in the staff report, um, it refers to permit construction of a roof deck, and then, the, the wording here is a little garbled, but, but basically talks about, um, one point of the garage is 12 feet from the line, and another point is 11.7 feet. Um, I, how, how was it advertised? Was it advertised as 10 feet?
Actually, we can grant less, because what he really needs is less than 10.
Right.
Right, but if it's advertised for 10?
But we can grant less, we just can't grant more.
We can grant, oh, oh, I see what you mean. I, so if we called it 11.7?
I, I think that was my fault how that happened, to be honest, because when I, I had, um, a survey done of the property, a, a, a brand new survey, and you all have it, I think, if you look right at it, and I also have the architectural review from our architect as well.
Right.
Just so we're right, I want to get back, I want to get in compliance.
Yeah, and, and you, you've submitted a copy of the, of the survey.
That's correct.
Um, which indicates that, um, let's see, the Which indicates that, let's see, the closest, the closest point is eleven point seven, I believe. Yes. So if we just said eleven point seven, that would then be accurate.
Absolutely.
Okay. Paul?
No questions.
So they're going to have a whole, they're going to have a roof deck.
Yep. But Phyllis, what they're going, if I may call you Phyllis, what they're going to do is they're going to have a parapet. You know, it's instead of a fence, there'll be like a parapet around, if you look at your drawing. And then, they're going to have, the people have, they're going to have a back staircase that goes up, and they're going to have a deck on top of that, of the roof. If you've seen the yard, and that's why me, yeah.
Right, the yard slopes down.
Oh, yeah.
I get that. My thoughts are about the privacy regarding the people that live next door.
Yeah. There's a lot of trees there, though. I, I do have.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it'll be a great back view, but then there's people who live right next door.
Right. Like, you know, like in any development situation, there's always that, yes. But I understand, just saying.
So, the parapet, how high are the walls going to be?
Actually, if you look at it, I believe they're, I believe they're forty-eight inches, but let me just verify.
Thirty-six.
I think that's right. Three feet. Three feet, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, three feet, thirty-six inches.
No further questions.
Now, that was a question I had about the height, too. And, so I have no further questions.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions at this time from the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at forty-seven Kingwood Drive? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Morton Alderman, I live at forty-one Kingwood Drive.
Forty-one.
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 That's the adjacent house.
Yeah.
How you doing, Mr. Alderman? How am I?
Dr. Alderman, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
I understand.
Okay, yes.
When I originally got the notice request for variance, I thought it was a request to make the garage even larger. I came, looked at the drawings, and found that there's not the case. I had no particular objection to the parapet, but as I looked out of my bedroom window today, I saw two cement foundations being built for air conditioning, air conditioning units on that side of the house, which are not in any plans here, and not in any variance request. And they're adjacent to our bedroom. There previously were trees there, at Mr. Battini's request, we had, he asked if he, we would object if we had two large pine trees removed, because the pine needles were falling into his swimming pool. And I said, fine, we'll take it down. I was told that additional trees would be put there. But I, nobody ever mentioned anything to me about air conditioning units, which tend to be a little noisy, and they're next to a bedroom.
I could explain that, though, Doc, how are you? Doc, I was just told about that maybe an hour ago.
Right, because I walked outside.
Right, he said that.
Both the contractor, and I said, they're not too happy about it.
Okay, let me, let me explain that. Firstly, that's completely rectified, just so you know. What they are is, fahitsu units, they call them fahitsu's, they're, I'll give you the technical term, they're duckless mini splits. Okay, they're small units, and it's, and it's a cooling thing, very quiet. But what we did, when I heard that, and Mr. Battini called me about it, says, hey, listen, we had a little problem today, we, not a problem, though, but, you know, a concern. And it's okay, we can put the units, get rid of the cement slabs, which you already did, they're gone. And we're going to put them on the wall, like, you know, we have a wall bracket, they're small units, and they're very quiet, Doc. I mean, they're, that's my business, I do for a living. They're very, very quiet.
Can I have a telephone number so I can call you three o'clock in the morning?
Here's my card, my cell phone's on.
Excuse me, gentlemen, but the testimony has to be addressed to the board.
Nobody's going to take them down.
Yeah, okay.
Right, can you put them on the inside of the garage?
No, you know, you know why, they have to be out to the element, to get, to transfer the.
And there's no other place, can't put them in the back?
Really, you won't even hear them, I promise. If, I will say this, you can put it in writing, if you have a problem with them, if he has a problem with them, we'll remove them and relocate, or find another situation, how to fix them, I will tell you that right now. I think everybody knows me here, when I say something, I do it, so, you know. I will, would that be satisfactory to you, Doc?
Okay. This is actually not relevant to the particular application. The, the application has to do with the location of the, of the garage.
No problem.
Yeah. So, whether there's a noise problem, there is, the town of Poughkeepsie does have a noise ordinance, and, and I think there's a, there's a remedy, I think you, you, you have taken the extra step here in, in assuring that there will be some satisfaction, but that is a, is an agreement between the two of you. Technically speaking, it really is not relevant to what we have to decide tonight.
I appreciate it.
I, I understand that it's related, but that's, that's something we can't, we can't do anything about.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Doc, keep my phone number, and you, well, I promise you, guarantee.
What is being air conditioned?
That's what I was wondering, the garage, or, it must be the garage.
Yeah, it's, it's, it must be, you know, the side of the garage, where he's putting it on. I just found out about it, to be quite honest with you, about an hour ago.
We're air conditioning the garage, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay. This is, this is getting.
Then I asked him, is that they're air conditioning the deck, that would be.
No, I don't think they're doing that, right. Yeah, but, yeah, this is getting a little far afield for us, sorry. Okay.
Does anyone in the board have a question for, yes?
Can you see, sir, from your house, can you see the top of the garage where they want to have a deck?
Absolutely.
And I'm assuming they're going to sit out there?
Yes, and, and, and Mr. Battini's agent, who is a contractor, told me that they were planning to plant trees there to replace the trees that were removed, and I had no reason to believe that that wasn't the case. I assumed he would do that, and.
Okay. One of the things that we can do is to attach a condition to the variance that there must be screening between the property line and the garage.
That's not going to help, that's not going to help him, I mean, you can't screen high enough for the roof of the garage.
Well, we, we, we can, we can have a condition that trees be planted, and presumably, and we can even say that these have to be trees of sufficient height.
When we were there, and we were looking at that, I had to wonder to myself, and I'm guessing that the applicant has some reason for doing this, but I, I thought it a bit strange that someone would choose to sit up there on the deck, on top of the garage, when they have a beautiful pool down there, and a deck down there to sit at. So I, you know, I kind of wonder about that. And then when you put the garage as the normal height, then you're going to put a three-foot fence above it. Someone, I mean, what, someone is going to see that, that's why I'm asking him, is he going to look down on that? And if they can't screen, if they screen the property line, that's not going to help.
Is that the case? Is that the case?
Well, I think that the.
Here's a picture of the.
Yeah, you can't see it, that's a picture of the.
It is your house.
Right, right. And there's no doubt, I mean, we look out now, there used to be a tree.
Right.
Which blocked, in case Mr. Battini invited voyeurs to his house. Right? They, they, I said, they, they would be able to peek in from the top of the roof into my bedroom window, yes. Not that anybody has acted doing that recently, but the.
The other thing is noise, I mean, if you have a deck, sometimes the tendency is to have people over, and you make, play a little music, from that height, I'm guessing the noise would really get around.
Yeah. Betty, I, I don't, I don't think Rick Battini is going to have that type of situation, you know, he's, he's not going to do that. But, and I know, I know the family for years, that's why I do some of their work, but he's not that type individual to have wild parties at all. But, but there is a noise ordinance as well in the, in the town, you know, as we all know. And I'm sure he's going to abide by it, by, you know, that, that type of development right there is also kind of, oh, how can I say it? It's, it don't facilitate that, you know, that type of party in that type of situation.
Mm-hmm.
But I appreciate what you're saying.
I certainly would appreciate if you could have some consideration about screening along with those only.
Okay.
We have no problem, we have no problem doing that.
The, in the event somebody came to tomorrow and said, I wanted to buy your house, except for the screening.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you help?
We have no problem with that.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals?
You know, the thing is.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Has my number, too, because he's been selling me oil.
Item nine.
Call me one day if you want to.
Elizabeth Carrado, one fifteen Ray Boulevard.
Oh, would that, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
You can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, have a seat, and just state your name into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Diana Chinchetta, and I'm here to represent Elizabeth Carrado and her children.
Ms. Chinchetta, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so can you just briefly tell us what, what the application is about?
Yes, this application, we are asking to get a variance on one side of the deck. The deck is twelve feet from the property line, and the setback should be twenty feet. The deck was built back, as far as we can tell, in nineteen eighty, so it's an existing deck. The house is being sold, when the buyers, municipals came back, there was no CO for this deck. So the building inspector came out, and he said that before he could give me a CO, I had to get a variance for the deck. So, with the help of Sandy, she has walked me through the process of applying for a variance for this deck. The deck doesn't stick out as much as the house, and I did a rendition of what the deck looks like to me, to the best of my ability.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, so this is, this is no closer to the side lot lines than the existing house?
No, the existing house sticks out. I think on the diagram I showed you where the existing house sticks out, maybe four feet more than the deck. The deck is skewed that way.
Okay. Paul?
No, no questions.
Phyllis?
Is that a single-family house?
Yes, I went through the process of getting it from a two-family to a single-family. All of that has been done, all of that has been taken care of, and I've got all the paperwork from that. And that all came back clear. So, we were just not sure of the deck, and because the father's deceased, the mother's incoherent, the children didn't know when the deck was built, they couldn't find the papers, the uncle who designed the deck is an architect, he's deceased, so the municipals said that there was no CO, so we just went with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at one fifteen Ray Boulevard? Yes, ma'am.
Kelly Murphy?
Ms. Murphy, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm right next door to Betty, and I don't really have an issue, the deck has been there. Didn't get built in nineteen eighty, though.
When was it built?
Because I bought the house in nineteen eighty-four, and the deck was not there.
Okay, so the children didn't know, and the uncle's deceased.
Because we had this, that porch that you're talking about, when we bought the house, we had to sign off on that, because it was too close to our property. And then we had to sign off on the fence. That is a little bit over on our property. And the deck is, I mean, it's been there, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make you take the deck down, that's ridiculous. I mean, they've been living there for thirty years. But it was, it was definitely built later than, than that, because it wasn't there when we moved in, so.
Okay.
So it's been there for, and it's going to be the same, they're not adding to it. In fact, the building inspector said that the top deck is great, it's the bottom deck that we just have to shore up a little bit to make it sturdy, but there's no going to be any additions, it's just going to be as-is.
Now, my other point was, because I know that the back was always used as a mother-in-law, because her mom is there.
Yeah, that's not.
How is that going to work when someone moves in?
I'm not going to have like.
No, it's not.
A whole bunch of people living there.
Nope, nope, nope. It was changed from a two-family to a single-family, and the tax records show that. And the family that is buying the house is a single-family, and they have four children, so the mother and father are actually using what once was an apartment as their bedroom, and the other three rooms are each room for each one of the children.
It's a separate place, though.
Not anymore, if you want, I can show you the inside.
Okay.
If they've been made so that you can go inside.
Once again, this really is not relevant to, to our, the issue before us, just for, just for the record, according to the official Dutchess County records, it is a one-family residence.
Right.
And that's, that's its official designation, so.
Okay.
Any, any other use would be illegal. I would also note that it really doesn't matter to us exactly when the deck was built. What is relevant is that it was before the existing zoning code was, was enacted, and, and that was two thousand and seven. So, you, you, you both seem to agree that the deck has been there long before two thousand and seven.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all we, that's all is relevant to the issue. Any other comment from the audience? If not, let me just make a note on the staff report, if you go to the staff recommendation, I believe the, the final phrase, and that this variance should be granted, so just delete the "not" from, from the, from the report. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals? Item ten, Stephanie Rothbard, eleven Bayberry Lane. Good evening. Have a seat.
Stephanie Rothbard, I am representing myself, eleven Bayberry Lane.
Ms. Rothbard, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Hi, Stephanie Rothbard. I am representing myself, 11 Bayberry Lane.
Ms. Rothbard, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths? I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. When we put up the fence, we got a contract with Mid Hudson Fencing. We were told by them that they were going, including the price would be permits, zoning, and everything else. So I thought this fence would be okay. Plus, I have a special-needs son, who is a runaway risk, and also, right now, I just started working. He's on respite care, so he needs to be outside. Sometimes I don't really trust him in the neighborhood. Sometimes I do with certain people and certain children in the neighborhood and their families because I know them. But for the most part, Jason can get very, very hurt. Or someone could actually take him. They'll see him, they'll observe him, they'll know that he's special needs, and he could get kidnapped if this fence is at 3.5 feet.
Okay, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions. She has two front yards.
Art?
No questions.
Yeah, as Betty pointed out, this is a common occurrence where there's a corner lot, you technically have two front yards. The fence is in along Laughin. The entrance to the house is actually on Bayberry. So the formal entrance is not what's being fenced. I have one question. There was some confusion in the documentation. The official owner, is it you?
It's actually my, I set up a trust for my son. So my son's trust actually owns the home. I'm the grantor of the trust, so I'm somewhat the owner of the home as well. I'm on the homeowner's insurance.
When I looked on the county records, the owners were listed as seagull?
No, it was supposed, there was a mix-up. And like, when I went over for the STAR program, they're still working on that, they had, we actually have the house deed. They actually have a copy of the deed, which is actually, has my son's trust name, and it has me as the grantor and guardian.
Okay, so the seagull is just not accurate?
Yeah. They haven't been there. I closed on the house on April 14th.
Fine, okay. Paul?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. And again, on the staff report, let me just suggest one correction that will, I think, clarify things, and that's in the staff recommendation. Just delete the last phrase. So it should respectfully submitted that the applicant has established that the granting of the variance would not result in any detriment to health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community, period.
Netheran.
Yeah, the last phrase just adds some, is just unclear. Okay. Is there anything from one audience that wishes to address 11 Bayberry Lane? Yes, ma'am. You got to speak into the microphone, please.
My name's Diana Nino. I live at 89 Bayberry Lane.
Reno's a...
Nino, N is in Nancy.
Nino, okay.
E is in Nancy, O.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths? I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
My husband, John Nino, and I are in opposition of a fence. It is out of character of the neighborhood. It does not substitute for any observation or supervision of a child, and it's a high-maintenance item. The fence that was put up in the backyard is right on the line, and it is affecting a willow tree. This tree, this fence as well, would affect the appearance of our property, the value, the character of the street, and I think affect our foliage that we have on the property. I don't think a fence is in any way, shape, or form a substitute for supervision of a child.
Okay, so that I'm clear, if we're facing your house, for Stanton Bayberry Lane facing your house, the applicant lives, the first house to the right?
To the right, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, any questions from members of the...
This is you here?
I would have to go.
Yes. All right, she said, yeah.
And I checked with some neighbors. I don't know the exact measurements, but I, to my knowledge, was the only person who got this letter. I do want to check with some other people in my neighborhood. You sent out other letters?
Yes, seven of the neighbors call.
Seven?
And other neighbors call. I've sent it to 12 people.
Oh, you did? On Bayberry or Bayberry and Laughin?
It's a 200-foot buffer.
Okay, so it's on both streets.
Yeah, 200 feet in every direction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I have a question. If she were to landscape, well, the fence where you can see it, I mean, would that help you? Because it is partially hidden with the trees there.
No, it's actually not. I did pass out pictures of the street. It's a very open neighborhood, and it would look out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. There is a picture of the street and other homes that I just handed in.
May I please say something?
Sure.
There are other neighbors in my neighborhood who all have six-foot fences.
Who?
There was a neighbor next door to her, on the other side of her, who has a red fence. Thank you.
And the front yard. This is in reference to your variance to the front yard. We have no opposition to your backyard.
My front yard is not near your property. It's on the other side, on Laughin Lane. That's what they're...
No, no, it's not.
Okay. A couple of things.
She has a corner lot.
I need to enforce some rules here. We can only accept testimony that's addressed to the board. Conversations between the two of you is not part of the record. The other is that our zoning code makes the distinction between fences that are in front yards and fences that are inside and rear yards. So that from a technical point of view, the only thing that requires, and our code allows six-foot fences in side yards and in rear yards. So that the only part of that existing fence that requires a variance is the fence that runs parallel to Laughin Lane.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? The only thing that requires a variance?
A variance is the section of the fence that runs parallel to Laughin Lane. Because it's a corner lot, there are two front yards. There's a front yard on Bayberry, there's a front yard on Laughin. And the code says that in front yards, the maximum height of a fence is 3 1/2 feet. So what's being applied for here is a variance to allow that portion of the fence that runs along the Laughin Lane front yard to be 6 feet.
Why not the Bayberry Lane? I'm not clear on your statement.
Okay. The portion of the fence that runs parallel to Bayberry Lane, it's actually just two short sections on the left and right of the house?
Absolutely.
Okay, those two are in fact behind the front yard line of the house.
They're actually legal.
Yeah, they're legal because they're actually, from the code's point of view, in the backyard. Okay.
They're behind the front line of the home, making them legal.
Okay, I don't, can...
I'm trying to look up...
Have I?
Yeah, I'm trying to look up the code section so I could give it her exactly, and I'm on general code, and it's missing.
Let me see.
Do you have the design, the proposal for the design of the fence?
It's the fence that is right now. She's legalizing the fence that she has right now. She's putting a new fence up. She's legalizing the fence that is up right now.
Okay, that part has not been made clear to me because I thought there was already a variance. So you're looking for the variance for the fence that is standing as-is?
Correct.
I'm sorry, because at that point, we thought that there was an additional fence being erected.
Do you want me to read it, Jim?
They're only legalizing, she's legalizing the front porch, the portion that's on Laughin.
Oh, we do not have an objection then. I mean, if I had known, I would have asked that it be put a little bit farther from our willow tree. But we thought that there was going to be another fence put up along the front of the lot.
No.
Okay.
No, no, yeah, I mean, to be fair to everybody, and I think place the blame where the blame sits is your contractor.
I know, and they sent us a contract later on saying, very small print, that we were responsible. We were no lawyers and trust officers, didn't even catch on.
Then things all of a sudden fall into place.
This is not the first time that people that do fences and some other things misrepresent to clients, and it is something that is annoying to everyone.
Okay.
And I suppose if there's a lesson here to everybody, when you talk with contractors about anything, ask explicitly, what are the permit issues?
Okay, thank you. That explains a lot.
We believe that that was what was discussed, which I discussed, lawyers discussed with this guy, and trust officer did, and he said, "Oh, yeah, it's included in the price." And...
Well, you're not the first one.
I know.
Okay, sorry about that.
Now I understand what you're talking about.
I hope that clarified. Maybe just so that all of it, if, Brian, you want to read the section of the code?
It actually just came up on the computer.
Because this comes up often.
Okay, 21069, fences and walls. In a residential district, walls and fences not exceeding 8 feet in height shall be permitted on any portion of a lot behind the front building line or the front setback line, whichever is less restrictive, except where the corner clearances are required for traffic safety, except as otherwise required in 21069. Within required front yards, no hedge, fence, or wall shall exceed 3 1/2 feet. Electric, barbed wire, razor wire, and other similar fencings shall be prohibited.
And then the other piece of that is just because it is a corner lot, both Bayberry Lane and Laughin are considered front yards.
It's weird.
So it's important, there's not an opposition to what's existing.
So this, yeah, was a little bit of a misunderstanding.
Okay, good. I'm glad we clarified that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
May I?
Yes.
Again, my name is...
You have already been sworn in.
Yes. I wondered, could I just see a diagram of the...
I got it.
Yeah, I think the...
The Google Map one I did?
Yeah, in effect, it's what's existing.
So just the fencing that is here?
Yes.
Is the one in question?
That's it.
And that will not be changed in any way. It's just conforming. Okay.
Right.
The way I read it, it was the corner was going to be obstructed.
Yeah, I think maybe there was miscommunication in the Poughkeepsie Journal or whatever might have been happening.
Well, the difficulties of this notion of a front yard, and I think a lot of people aren't aware that on a corner lot, there are...
The backyard is actually the front yard.
There are automatically two front yards, and so when you see a sign going up in the front yard, I think people, some people interpret that to mean that there's this wall that's going up in front of your house, and that is exactly...
No, no, I definitely don't want the case in my whole entire house, it's like backyard case then.
Yeah, okay.
I was concerned about safety on the corner.
Yeah, no, the, there's no issue here with obstructing traffic views. Okay, if there are no further questions in the audience or from board members, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kuzzles? Next item, number 11.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Connie Sololari, 24 Misty Ridge Circle.
Hi, again.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you?
We remember you.
Yes.
Okay. I guess these folks need to be sworn in, so if you'd each state your name.
My name is Quani. I live in 24 Misty Ridge Circle, Poughkeepsie.
Can you spell your name for me?
Q-A-N-I.
Okay.
And...
Emiliano Sololari. I'm, that's my father, so I'm going to speak for him.
Mr. Sololari, and Mr. Sololari, did I say it correctly? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths?
Yes.
I hope you got it. Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that what you're applying for is a variance to allow a front porch to be closer to the front lot line.
Yes, right now, I guess it's not considered a porch, it's just a doorway, and it's the same size that we're doing, but we're going to do it from the line of the house, the other line of the house, so...
So making the existing porch wider?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. But no deeper?
No.
No, okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art? No questions. Paul? The construction that's going on there now?
Yes.
What's that about?
We had a little problem with a water leak inside, so my dad and I put a tubing in the bottom.
A curtain drain?
Yes.
All right, that's all.
We wanted to do that before we started for the porch, so...
Okay. Lois?
How does the building of the porch impact the previous variance that you were...
The variance before was for the building on top, which we're still, we're still looking to build. We just had some family issues to deal with, and hopefully we'll be starting that probably next year. But I am aware that we have to reapply for the permit, for the permit, so we're going to do that at the end of this month, and that will probably be started next year, next summer. But the front porch, that's a project for my dad that he's concerned about because as soon as we walk into the house, we have a little dog, and when we open the door, he kind of like tried to run away. It's very narrow, and it's very difficult to get into the house. So I think the porch will help a lot and give him some time to relax as well because they work hard, so...
And when were you planning on starting the porch?
We were supposed to, we have Baxter Construction, I'm sorry, Baxter, I don't know what their legal name is. We were about started, but then he applied for the zoning, and he got denied. So we're just waiting for this, and we're gonna, he's just waiting for us, so...
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
Thank you.
Carmen?
Okay, my question was regarding the trench to the right-hand side of the house. And so that's to divert the water away?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And it comes up to the foundation to the right of the front door, too. So the water was going in the basement?
Yes.
Okay. And no further questions?
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 24 Misty Ridge Circle? Okay, seeing none, there are no further questions from the board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
Item 12, built parcel 4 LLC, 25 Van Wagner Road. Okay, good evening, gentlemen. Good evening. And I think if each of you, when you're ready, would just state your names for the record.
Eric Nyler with Tinkelman Architecture.
Michael Rodriguez, Tinkelman Architecture.
Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths? I hope you got it.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. We're appearing before the board tonight. We have a couple of special permits that we're going to be requesting. So we were before the board, I think it was 2011, I checked back in the record, so it's been a while, and we wanted to take just a few minutes of your time, and we'll give you a little update on the project, let you know what's been going on, and kind of what we have in mind for the future. So I wanted to start off just kind of talking about some of the properties that we have or that we're in the process of developing. So our office is currently located here at 25 Van Wagner Road, and we're right on the corner of Van Wagner and the arterial. We also own the piece of property here, which is directly to our west, and then we're currently in negotiations to obtain this piece from the DOT. There's also a small piece that the town owns, which Springside used to cut across, directly across their trail before that was put in. So we're dealing with developing this property. We also own the house, which is across the road, 45 Springside, and it came with this piece of property you see here. And then we're currently in contract to purchase the corner piece here, we're actually getting ready for the closing, which is 57 Springside Avenue. So the current development, the reason we were here before the board was dealing with this side of the road, now we're ready to jump over to the north side of the road, we'll be working here. And I think in the master plan you have in your packet, we were showing development on both sides, but really we're looking for the approvals for the north side only, and the south side, just to kind of show you what we have in mind for the future. So there were actually a couple of iterations of the plan, and they're related to the availability of that lot here on 57 Springside Avenue. So I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, he's gonna talk a little bit about what he had in mind, and then what some of the changes were.
Thank you, Mike. Well, the earlier iteration of the plan, as Mike said, was developed because we didn't have this parcel on the end of the, at the corner. So that kind of drove us to creating an access drive to get up to the residential buildings that were to sit on top of the hill. And then we had another building here on Springside that would be mixed commercial and residential, be commercial on the ground floor, and six units of, well, actually it was smaller at that time, but residential units above. The basic idea of the project is urban placemaking, we've made this great stride forward here in making this abandoned or disused warehouse into our office, and now the Center for Prevention of Child Abuse and Poughkeepsie. It's really turning into a node of good things for the neighborhood, and this is another stage in that. Again, the earlier plan was somewhat affected by not having this parcel, so we had this access drive, which actually split these two buildings apart, the house that Mike alluded to, which would get a small addition on it also. So there'd be activity on the street, there'd be commercial spaces, small things like a coffee shop, possibly a wine bar, could be a yoga studio, something appropriate. And it would be, it would have some public space associated with it. But the presence of the drive was necessary. But as Mike said, we now had the opportunity, or have recently had the opportunity to purchase the parcel at the corner, and that's really opened up the project in a really exciting way, tremendously much more, sort of more vital to the neighborhood idea that we wanted to foster in the first place. So there are residential units up on the hillside with great views towards the south, out over the trees of this lot, which will leave pretty much untouched. We'll take down the house at the corner of the 57 Springside Address, and the parking for these units will be on the high side of the hip, concealed from view. And there'll be pedestrian pathways that can take you down to Springside. There'll be six residential units over top of three, well, possibly one to three commercial spaces on Springside. So it remains a very much an urban place, but without the presence of the road, we have the opportunity to really develop this, the space between the old house and the new house as a kind of major neighborhood amenity, a feature that people in the neighborhood might walk to to have a cup of coffee. Obviously, the patrons of the businesses and the people who live in the project on the top of the hill would have access to it as well. The kind of visual drivers are making something new, but making something that is still connected to the past of the neighborhood and the past of Poughkeepsie in some ways. It's modern architecture, but it's meant to fit in and makes use of traditional elements in a sort of appropriate way. We've kind of set the themes with the buildings directly on the other side of the street from this, the two small houses that we renovated when we did our office building, so I think you can get a flavor of what we're after. It's a little bit larger scale, but again, very appropriately scaled for the neighborhood and for the intended uses.
And so if I could, just in closing, in the ordinance, the mixed use and multi-story dwellings are the preferred form of use in the ATC District, so really we're here to ask for a special permit to make those uses possible as part of this development.
Okay. Let me just get clear before I turn it over to the board for questions about particularly what kind of a special permit you need and why you need it. And I would ask Brian and our counsel to correct me, but in the Arlington Town Center zoning district, there's a provision that requires a special permit to allow, and I'm quoting, I think, multifamily dwellings, new construction, and mixed residential and non-residential uses in multi-story structures or as part of a unified development in the Arlington Town Center zoning district. Okay, I think that's right. So the special permit here has really to do with the mixed use that you're proposing in that particular phase of your development. Okay, and so when the time comes for you to go to the south side of the street or to the west, you'll be back?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood exactly what the scope of the permit was. And as such, the requirements for issuing a special permit are listed out in our code and in your application and in the staff report. They've been rehearsed one by one. Okay. Okay. Oh, and I also want to add on the agenda, it says that from an environmental point of view, this is an unlisted action and an uncoordinated review. The planning board was the lead agent for the seeker review. We actually voted on that a few months ago, allowing that. They have, in the meantime, issued a negative declaration on the seeker issues. So in effect, it is a coordinated review, and we don't have to do anything further in terms of the environmental issues. So we can focus solely on the special permit issues. Ian, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I think they've done a beautiful job on what they've done already, and I think what they're proposing is exactly what the intent of the ordinance is related to a town center. And we'll see if you meet all the criteria.
Okay, Art?
I've got no questions, looks very, I mean, presentation's spectacular.
Paul, any questions?
How many variances do you expect will be required for the project?
Currently in this configuration on the north portion, we're not gonna require any variances. Once we get into development on the south, that's, well, again, as was pointed out, we'll be back before the board.
Okay, that's all. Phyllis?
So, just to clarify, you're planning on building how many apartments in that area?
So we'll have a total of 23 dwelling units on this side of the property. So there's 16 up on top of the hill, there's six in this building here in the center, and then we're keeping the existing residential unit in the house there at 45 Springside.
So the house with what looks like a root cellar or whatever that's stained?
Correct.
Okay. And the square footage of the apartments? If I may, do you have?
They're in the neighborhood of 1,000 to 1,100 square feet. Some of them are smaller than that, there's some mix of one bedrooms and some duplex units. And, I'm sorry, simplex and duplex units, one and two bedrooms.
Okay. And your thoughts about the people who you're building for? Young professionals, families? You're looking to draw someone?
Yes. Yeah, we, that's the, these are part of, try to revision this, help revision this area. So, you know, we thought maybe it could be Vassar faculty members, it could be a young family, it could be someone that commutes into the city, and they take the bus to the train station from there, it could be young professionals, people with relatively small families, because we're the largest units, we have our two bedrooms, but.
So you're kind of looking to build a walking community?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's the ergo, the presence of that, we're developing that plaza space between the two buildings, that actually works around a massive tree that's right out in front of that house there, so it's kind of like building on what's there. And there are pedestrian walkways that would take you from the building up on top of the hill, down a pathway, around a set of steps, down to the plaza on that level, and we've got a crosswalk that will eventually connect future development on the south side, if that, when that takes place, with that area as well. We're asking for some, we're putting some on-street parking, which kind of fosters that lively street sense, you know, people could pull up out front, go in and get their coffee, or go to their yoga class, whatever transpires on the commercial levels of the level of the buildings.
Have people expressed interest in the commercial spaces that you're building?
We have, we've actually had a number of discussions. I don't think I'm liberated to mention specifics, but there's some very interesting businesses, and we've come close a couple times. We're hoping to land a business that will be a draw for the community.
No further questions?
Carmen?
Yes, that was one of my questions, what type of businesses you were going to, wanted to attract?
Yeah, we have kind of a romantic notion of who we might get into the space, particularly in the smaller house, we were thinking something nice, like a small bakery, or maybe a wine bar would be kind of a cool, trendy kind of a user. So we're actively pursuing those types of tenants to use the space.
Okay. And my understanding, when we were out there the other day, is the barn would be coming down, that red barn?
That's correct.
That would be coming down the house on the corner.
As well, yes.
Okay. And John? So with the mixed use, you would have commercial or retail on the first floor, and then there's two stories.
Correct, there's six duplex units above the commercial level. And the commercial spaces, whether it's, we find a single user or subdivided, there'd be a sort of arcade, a porch that wraps around the entire front of the building, that kind of gives it that neighborhood scale and feel.
Okay. You know, town centers were proposed so many years ago in the master plan, and it's kind of nice to see something come to fruition, possibly, and a real town center. No further questions?
Okay. On the staff report, I have a couple of comments in the beginning, where it says, "Re-Tinkelman Architecture." I think the last line needs to be deleted. It refers to a special use for an accessory apartment, and that's just not the issue here, so just delete that. The other comment I would make on this is that under project description, what's being described there is the overall project, not just phase one. And I think in your application, you make it clear that you're simply talking about the properties on the north side of Springside Avenue, a total of 23 residential units, and then the commercial space. So I just wanted to make it clear exactly what it is that we are voting on. I must say, reading through both your application and in the staff report, I couldn't believe that you were proposing this without a whole list of variances for various things. And so I really looked through this a bit aggressively, saying, how can they get away with that? And indeed, it's pretty amazing. I don't believe you'd need any, I mean, I know the staff has looked carefully at it, and what, one of the things that makes this possible is that in the Arlington Town Center District, you're allowed to put residences above commercial spaces, and that doesn't count against the density. And you've made wonderful use of that provision here, I think creating a kind of residential density that is gonna benefit the entire Arlington area. And it looks very, very interesting. So I really have no questions, I'm a little flat-footed, in fact. I expected we were gonna have to go through all kinds of variances. Are there any questions or comments from the public on the built parcel four application? If not, any other questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recused? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. And good luck. Item 13, Burger King, 621 Duchess Turnpike. Is there someone here representing Burger King? Good evening, sir, if you'd just state your name and be sworn in.
Good evening, my name is Ozzy Biker, and I'm here representing Burger King and Carol's Corporation, which owns the franchise.
Mr. Biker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so you're proposing some changes to the existing Burger?
Yes, this is quite similar to the one we did about six months ago, I believe was a timeframe on the corner of Vassar Road and Route 9, the same basic concept. It's a remodel and freshening up the store.
Okay. Let me just be a bit more specific. Is it gonna be substantially the same? I mean, is the Burger King on Duchess Turnpike is gonna look pretty much like the one down at Vassar Road?
Yeah, a couple of the things are, basically, it's the same type of design, they're installing parapets, it's going to be basically the same thing. If you look at the main elevation on the one on Vassar Road, the wall sign was to the right above this, the home and the whopper, this one's to the left, just simply because of the design of the building, that's where the entrance is, opposed to where it was in the other building.
Basically the same thing, same color schemes, everything.
Basic features?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay, Paul?
The parapet, would that obscure all the stuff on the roof, all the HVAC stuff? Is that gonna go all the way around and cover that up?
The parapet doesn't go all the way around. I think it covers what you're referring to. It's, can I just show you the elevations? Just may answer the question.
Point to one elevation that you want to describe.
This, this is the main entrance, which would be the one, uh, facing...
Be facing, um, east, more or less east, yes.
No, I don't have any.
So, where will the HVAC stuff be? Visible from that, from that direction?
I believe that it is behind this... The, the front, this is the drive-through, I believe they are behind these paths here, between these two.
We only, I only brought that up, sir, because for the one on Vassar Road, when they started to build it, they put the nice parapits up and everything, and you, and then when you pulled into the drive-through at the back of the building, there was the entire HVAC, uh, and all kinds of stuff like that. And it was, our department was kind of wondering, well, they spent all this money on this, and still the, the building is kind of, just wasn't as pleasant-looking as it could be, and they ended up putting the parapet on the back of it, which was, they just framed out a wall. That's why I asked that. Let me just check on that.
I'm not, I'm not the builder.
Exactly.
I don't know the answer for sure.
Yeah, and again, I would just, we need to remind ourselves, the application, uh, before us has to do with signage.
Exactly.
And, uh, I don't know, there...
That's absolutely, does not weigh on this, this very...
Yeah, if the, you know, you're, the, the planning department may well have some...
I'll see them again.
Architectural issues, yes.
I will see them again.
Yes, okay.
I, I can bring it to the attention of the real estate people, because obviously, they haven't started yet, so if I bring it to their attention...
Our, our building department and our planning department, when we go out to the site, we'll talk to them about it anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I will, I will bring it to their attention.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
I have to back up a little bit. I'm just looking at this sketch. It's hard to see, you're, just your grayscale?
Yes.
If you look at the main elevator, entrance elevation, okay? And over, way over to the left, it says, "Taste is King." Is that a sign, or is that, what is that?
That's an awning.
That's an awning? So, it is...
It's not going to have that writing on it, right?
That's a sign.
No, that's, that's their standard, but, no, that has no writing on it. The same thing we did...
Okay.
At the other one.
Okay.
That, those are gone.
All right, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Nice.
All right. Very good. All right. Okay, anything else from members of the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this? Okay, if there's no further questions, there's a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's return to item number five, Patrick and Denise O'Donohue, from sixty-one Crestwood Boulevard. Okay? I have no idea what this is about, so, in deference, um, let me ask the board to adjourn this. So, I will move that item number five be adjourned to our October meeting. So, this is October twentieth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, so, item, item five, that may not have been able to make it to the meeting tonight. That takes us to the end of our public hearing agenda, is, um, I would like to take a five-minute recess. Sounds like there's no objection. So, we will be in recess for five minutes. I would just ask people to, um, return quickly. We've got a lot to, um, to deliberate on. Okay, would the meeting please come back to order? So...
Who's still here?
Let's see, uh... No. No, I know, the, O'Donohue was just next. So, let's see, going down the agenda, um, we'll, we'll do those that are the audience first, so... Okay, so, um, item number four, these twenty-five eighty-six, twenty-six hundred South Road, a variance to allow a second wall sign of eighty-five square feet, where only one wall sign of one hundred square feet is allowed. This is an unlisted action, um, and short, and environmental assessment short form has been included in the application. So, I move that the, uh, ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of environmental review of application in item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? I further move that the ZBA finds that, based on the, um, EAF short form submitted by the applicant, that it finds that the action proposed in item number four will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, on the, uh, application itself, um, I just note that in your packet you'll find a, uh, staff review, um, recommending that the variance be approved. Any questions, discussions, comment?
Can we just note, as we, as we usually do, that the signs need to go off at the end of the business day, or whatever time it is? I know it's in the ordinance, but...
Yes.
We usually kind of throw that in there.
Yes, thank, thank you. Marcy Marlowe used to be very good about that. I have forgotten, thank you for continuing that tradition, that, um, signs either have to be turned off around timers after, if the business is closed, the lights have to go off at eleven PM. Okay.
I, I think there are two things. One, that if you're going south on Route nine, you need that second wall sign to be able to know where the building is. And then, when you get into the plaza, you need the, the other sign to really locate where it is. And there's been signs on both of those walls for many years.
Forever.
Yeah, and, yeah, I would agree. Okay, um, yes.
Are they going to have a sign on the signpost for that plaza?
I think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah, there's, there's a marquee sign going.
See the little, who's, this, this thing?
On, on the monument sign?
Yeah.
Isn't that it? Isn't this it?
Yeah, I don't know whether the...
That little thing.
Yeah.
Was there's only one, that's the one down by the bank?
That they don't need.
On the, on the marquee.
The marquee.
Down by the bank?
Just going to be a space.
Down by the bank? But isn't that a rotating basis, those signs, I thought? I thought most of those signs, then they're on a rotating basis, as the businesses...
They are.
Okay, so it's going to be like everybody else, it's going to be...
Yeah, okay. Okay, if there's no further, uh, discussion, um, Christine, do you want to make the motion on this one?
Not this?
Okay, this is number four. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance for Sleepy's. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels? Okay, the variance is approved, six-zero. Then, let's see, what do we have here?
Mrs. Speedling is here from Raker Road.
Okay, so, oh, okay, so, go right to item number six. Paul Speedling, six Raker Road, a variance to allow a deck to be located three feet from the side lot line, where twenty feet is required. The type-two action, so there's no further environmental, uh, issues we have to adopt. And in your packet, you will find a, a staff report, um, recommending that the variance be approved. Discussion?
Well, I think the uniqueness of the backyard, um, is what his problem is, and without this variance, he would have a limited use of his backyard, or far more limited use of his yard.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? I mean, I, I normally would be a little concerned about something that's as close as three feet. Fact that there is a fence there that substantially sub-screens it, I think, is a real mitigating factor. So, I really, um, don't have a problem with this. Okay, if, uh, no further, just, actually, Betty, would you like to do this one?
Sure, uh, I make the vote, a motion that the board approve the area variance set forth in item number, item number, oh, six. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopt the findings, the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. And in addition, because I don't think it says anything in there about, um, I, I would just like to note that, um, the uniqueness of the, the backyard is what, um, prompted us to grant a variance of this size, or this nature.
Okay, all right, that, that's in effect part of the findings, so, yeah, good. All right, so, motion's been made, let's see, did, was there a second?
Second.
Okay. To approve the variance at six Raker Road. So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels? Okay, approved, uh, six-zero. Okay, um... And we can now move to, uh, item number eight. Anthony Bottini, forty-seven Kingwood Drive. A variance to allow an attached garage to be located eleven point seven feet from the side lot line, where twenty feet required. This is a type-two action, and in your staff report, there's, um, findings and a recommendation that this variance be approved. Let me just note, then, in the staff report, uh, under, um, right towards the beginning, under app, application type, um, let's just amend that to read, "An area variance from Article Three," so on, "to permit the construction of a roof deck above a garage located eleven point seven feet from the side lot line, where twenty feet is the standard." Okay, I'd like to just clarify that. Okay, um, any other discussion, comment?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Do you think it would be feasible to ask the applicant to have plantings along the side of the deck, or the side of the roof deck that, um, meets Dr. Alterman's side? I mean, I've seen lots of trees on roofs and that sort of thing, but would that, do you think that would be helpful? Because to put something along...
I think if you put some mature, um, deciduous trees that leaf out in the spring and summertime, you're really not going to have a noise or visual problem in those, in the other months. No one's going to be up there. I think that would satisfy, um, the concerns of the neighbor.
It is pretty open, well, to the left of the, left of the house there. And I, I think we should specify, uh, that they should be mature. We're not talking about seedlings here, we're talking about some real trees going in. And, uh, because they have concerns about the air conditioning, and we really don't know how that's all going to play out. that's all going to play out, so.
Because, but actually, deciduous trees would make a big difference in terms of the noise, too.
Right.
Right.
I'll, I'll go for that.
But, Mr. Chairman, I believe that, that you agreed that that would happen.
Okay, but I, I think we can put it in as.
No, it's fine about saying.
Condition, so, so, how would you phrase it, Paul?
I, mature, deciduous trees. So at least.
Between the garage and the property line?
We'd put them on, at least closer to the property line, so that.
Are they air conditioners? Or are there, are there heat pumps? Because if they're heat pumps, they may be on during the winter time, then.
Yeah.
The windows are gonna be closed.
trees won't have any, won't have any leaves on it.
We'll, we'll put the trees in.
Right, but the windows will be closed in winter time.
Mm-hmm.
Put the trees in.
Okay.
No problem.
Yeah.
And the air conditioners aren't very quiet, though, the Fihitsu's, they're.
I saw them on this old house, they're very quiet.
Yeah, they're very quiet.
Yeah.
Believe, you can hear them running.
Okay, so, to the, to the, to the motion, then, let's.
What do you go ahead and do?
Do you want?
I'll do the next one.
Not to put burden on staff, but I mean, are you gonna, how are you gonna monitor what's a mature tree? Are you gonna have them come to staff to get it approved? You've done that in the past, where you've had the staff approve what the proposed plantings are? Or you're just gonna leave it to the applicant?
I mean, do. I think I would, I would just leave it as mature.
Mature?
Trees. Either gonna satisfy the neighbor or it's not, and if it doesn't satisfy the neighbor, he'll let us know, and.
Yeah.
That will clearly not satisfy us.
Right.
I would, yeah, mature.
So.
That's fake.
So Art, do you want to make the motion and then add the condition?
Sure. Whatever. Okay, we're on number eight, right?
Yeah.
I move that the board approve the request for area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of the site visit by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. And we have the following conditions, that the applicant plant mature, whatever, mature trees.
Deciduous.
Deciduous trees between the properties to provide screening from the new deck.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve with one condition, the variance requested at forty-seven Kingwood Drive. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, approved six-zero. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Let's see.
Seven-zero, isn't it? Nobody?
Richard Jackson?
Yes, there are seven.
Seven, but seven-zero, not six-zero.
There are only six of us here.
There's seven of us.
Four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
It was just on Breslow because, or Rutberg, because Paul had a recuse.
You had a long weekend.
That's right, that's right, that's right, okay.
You have jet lag.
Oh, and it's, yeah.
That retired life will get to you.
We'll get you for that.
Far away from that, Jim.
All right, uh, let's see, uh. Number nine, right?
Uh, yes, Carrato.
Okay, Elizabeth Carrato, one fifteen Ray Boulevard. A variance to allow an existing deck to be located twelve feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required. The type-two action. And you will find a staff report, and I've already noted the correct, the typo that needs to be corrected in the, in the recommendation, but the recommendation is to approve the variance. Any further discussion? Okay. Paul, you want to do this one?
Sure. I move the board approve the request of an area variance set forth in item number nine. Decision is based upon the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. Approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five as amended of the staff report.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the variance at one fifteen Ray Boulevard. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Adopted seven.
Seven.
Seven-zero, Jim.
How about that?
You left somebody out before.
I know who it was, Tim.
Well, it was six on the application he referred to, because Paul was gonna refuse himself.
That's, that's your fault.
That's why.
It's your fault, Paul.
You got me all messed up, okay.
I think that was a clarification, wasn't it, Betty?
There's no one here, not big.
Parcel four, isn't it?
Parcel four and Burger King.
All right.
Uh, okay, okay, so let's go to twelve. Built Parcel Four LLC, twenty-five Van Wagenen Road, a special permit to allow multifamily dwellings, new construction, and mixed residential and non-residential uses in multi-story structures as part of a unified development in the Arlington Town Center zoning district. And as I noted before, the planning board is issued a negative declaration. In your packet, you will find a staff report recommending that the special permit being approved, and I noted a couple, a couple of clarifications at the beginning of the staff report. Otherwise, it's a, it's a very detailed analysis of all of the, both the general and the specific criteria required for a special permit. Any questions or comments on any of the criteria or on the application as a whole?
It appears that it meets all the criteria.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I am impressed with the way in which I think this application tries to really embody the, the goals that went, that were behind the idea of a, of a, of a town center. I mean, it's really, it's, I, if, if this succeeds, and I hope it does, I, I hope it becomes a precedent for other things, not just in the Arlington Town Center, but in the other town centers that are in the code. Okay. If there are no other questions, Phyllis, you want to do a special permit for us?
I move to, am I reading this in the affirmative?
Yes.
I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number twelve. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, the results of site visit by board members, and the staff report.
And that it.
Oh, in approving, I'm sorry, and it meets all necessary criteria for a special use permit, and the board adopts as findings in the staff report.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve the special use permit for the Phase One development at twenty-five Van Wagenen Road. There are no further comments or?
It was seconded.
It's, it's been seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Recusal's?
Opposed.
Oh, one opposed, okay. So the special use permit is approved by a vote of six to one. All right. Uh, let's see, then we have Burger King. Six twenty-one Duchess Turnpike. Two variances, one to allow a wall sign of twenty-seven square feet that is not fixed flat against the wall, and two, a second wall sign of nineteen point six-four square feet. This is an unlisted action, and there will be an. Have short form on this, Sandy? Okay, I just don't happen to have it in front of me, but, but if it's on file, that's. Okay, in that case, I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of environmental review of the application at Burger King, item number thirteen.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? I further move that the ZBA finds on the basis of the EAF short form that the action proposed in item number thirteen will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, the, the county has said this is a matter of local concern. There is no staff report, so let me sort of devise one as we go here. So I move that the board adopt as findings as follows. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. The board finds that there will be no undesirable change based on the fact that these signs are replacing existing signs, and that indeed, the total signage under this proposal will be less than what exists at present. We further note that this is a building that's within a large shopping center, and that the, the signage is consistent with what exists there now. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The board finds that for the renovation of the exterior, the applicant is, must have a variance in order to place signs on the appropriate sides of the, of the building. There's, there's no other location that would be feasible. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The variance is substantial in the sense that one of the signs is in fact not on the wall. The, the other sign, it's a second sign, so that by definition is, is substantial. However, would note that the size of the signs is, is in fact a decrease in the existing signage. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. As the board noted in its environmental review, this will have no effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of area variance. The difficulty is self-created, however, it's, it was necessary in order to update and improve the appearance of the building. So the, the, these, then, I would move that these are the findings of the ZBA. So is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? All right, with those as findings, Carmen, do you want to make the motion?
Oh, oh, okay.
No, those are the findings.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so in the, in the motion, we are adopting as findings.
Can we just skip that and go on?
Or you could just do that as your motion.
You want to do that? Okay, all right, so, so, okay.
This is a good job.
All right, all right, so, I move, board request the, the variance set forth in item number thirteen, decision based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, result of site visits by board members, and the findings of the board. In approving this vari, or, or, no, period. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations previously.
Stated.
Stated. So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, approved, seven-zero, okay.
Yeah, very.
All right.
Now we go back.
Going back now to item seven, which is twelve Flamingo Drive. A variance to allow an addition to be located sixteen feet from the east side lot line and ten feet from the west side lot line where twenty feet is required for each. This is a type-two action, and in the staff report, the recommendation is that this will have, this will not have any negative impact on the neighborhood. Any question, discussions? Okay. If not, Carmen?
Sure. Okay, I move that the board, that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the variance at twelve Flamingo Drive has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Approved, seven-zero. Item ten, Stephanie Rothbard, eleven Bayberry Lane. A variance to allow a fence of up to six feet high to be located within a front yard where the maximum height of the fence is three point five feet. Again, this is a type-two action, so there's no environmental determinations. In the staff report, again, I'm, I think, for clarification, under the recommendation, if we delete the last phrase, so that the staff recommendation is that this variance would not create any detriment to the neighborhood.
I'm spelled with a D or a T, Sandy, the last name.
Rothbard?
Bard, is it Bard?
B-A-R-D.
D.
Yeah.
Oh, it says B-A-R-T.
Bard.
Yep, that's why I asked. Because I gotta put it in writing.
I'm happy that the neighbor figured out what was happening and feels better about
Yes, yes, so. Yeah, I think that.
Well, that happens a lot, when people don't talk, you know, if you're coming in zoning for something, my advice is talk to your neighbors so that they understand what it is you want to do, because most of the time, they have a different idea.
They never talk.
You know, and that's, that's unfortunate. The other, the other thing that we saw on this was, people just have to be careful when they go and sign contracts for.
Right.
Right.
All kinds of work, and people say, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of all of the permits and all of that, and then all of a sudden, you realize they didn't, and. And then all of a sudden, you realize they didn't, and, um... and it... and it comes back to haunt you. Okay.
Okay.
Uh...
Ready?
So, yeah, I guess on item ten, if there's no further discussion, I guess we're back. Christine?
Sure.
I'm ten.
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made second to approve the application for a variance at eleven Bayberry Lane. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Recouzels? Approved, seven-zero. Item eleven, Connie... Quanny Sololari, twenty-four Misty Ridge Circle, uh, variance to allow a proposed front porch to be located at twenty-six-point-eight feet from the front lot line where thirty feet is required. It's a type-two action. Uh, you will find a staff report recommending that, um... well, actually, it's... it's, um, stating that, um, this variance would not result in any detriment to the community. And again, here, I would... I would delete the last phrase in that recommendation line, just...
And then the other piece is the staff report refers to it as a deck, I think it's a front porch, correct?
Uh...
A deck.
Yeah, the proposed... oh, yes, okay, so... so...
Throughout, we'll just change.
So throughout, it should be, um, porch, yeah, okay.
The only comment I have is, he described the need for it as to help in getting... when you open the door, to keep the dog from leaping out. I'm a little confused about how a porch facilitates that.
I... I think it's because if the porch is narrow...
Is it a deck?
Um, you... you basically have to open the door... you have to step to one side, open the door wide, and then... and then go in. Whereas if the deck is a little deeper, you can... you can be more in front of the door.
They're not making it any deeper, they're only making it...
I think, um, if, in any case...
There's no more non-conforming than it already is.
And I... I really, I, you know, this is such a small, um...
It's a...
It is.
Three-foot something, three-foot four-inch variance for a front porch, and porches are very common in houses of these, I don't see a reason to.
Yeah.
Try it.
Yeah. Um, I think that...
Neither do I, I was just baffled about the explanation.
It adds just a little kind of charm, I think, to it.
Explanation?
Or the porch.
Or the porch.
Okay, all right. If... if... if we're done reciting the possible uses of a porch, um... Betty, would you like to make the motion then?
All right, I move that the board approve the area variance, uh, set forth in item number...
Eleven.
Eleven. Um, this decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. And in approving this, I ask that the board accept, um, the staff report in, as stated in items one through five, um, changing everything that says deck to porch and taking off under staff recommendations, number one, after the last comma, the rest of the sentence.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance at twenty-four Misty Ridge Circle. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Approved, seven-zero. All right, two further items on our agenda. Um, from the planning board, a request that they serve as lead agency on the Marist College Natural Science and Allied Health Building at Beck and Fulton Street. Um, Brian, can you... two-sentence description, what's this... what's this about?
I'm not fully sure, but I believe that there was a question in the, um, along Beck Place in regards to, uh, property that Marist has in regards to width and stuff like that.
Okay.
Actually, I think they're doing substantial work on the, um, the Natural Science and Allied Health Building. It was basically just more improvements than the Marist campus.
Now, is... is that a building that exists, or is that being proposed?
You can ask the hard questions, aren't you?
I...
I don't think there's anything there right now.
I don't think there's anything there.
There's anything there right now, isn't that...
Is that where the house in the parking lot is?
I think so.
With the old...
That's... well, Beck is... Beck, isn't Beck where, um...
There's still... there's still one...
House.
The house. House by the steps, by the underpass, right?
Right.
This is all improvements, the roadway, the parking area, in anticipation of...
Oh, yeah, this is the one where they're gonna have the physician assistant program. Like an entirely new...
Yeah.
Um...
They wanna build over there sometime.
If I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember, 'cause the planning board meeting was like two months ago when they were talking about it.
Okay, but I... I guess what I'm getting at is that this is an issue that's gonna be before the planning department for all kinds...
Yeah.
Of review, right, and so it's...
This is very big.
So it's not as if it's a zoning or a... Okay, all right, in that case, um, I move that the ZBA, um, um, approve the request of the planning board to serve as lead agency on the Marist College Natural Science and Allied Health Building.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Okay, the second one...
The... it's the demolition of the warehouse building and a new forty-tha... forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot structure.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So it's gonna... it's gonna be... the planning board is gonna have the... have a long look at that. Okay. Uh, second one, Town of Poughkeepsie, uh, Planning Board requesting lead agency status on the Lutheran Care Network Assisted Living Facility, three-eighty-two, and I assume this is Van Wagner Road.
Yes, it is.
Um, and again, this is a new construction.
Yeah, this is... this is one that's been ongoing for a long time, I think they've already moved, yeah.
It's been there for a long time, right, Betty?
Beginning.
And it's sort of a phase, 'cause it's very expensive to build the road, so they've done it in phases, and they've completely revamped how they're doing it. So again, it's gonna be in front of the planning board for a lot of things, and may... and, you know, it could be one of those things where it may or may not end up in front... I think it might end up in front of permits more than variances.
Okay. All right, in that case, um, I move that the ZBA approve the request, the planning board, to serve as lead agency on the Lutheran Care Network Assisted Living Facility.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Okay, that completes our agenda unless anyone has any further, uh, items. Actually, I do have one, uh, as some of you know, but... but unfortunately, it wasn't circulated widely. The Duchess County Planning Department is having, uh, one of its, uh, training sessions, I believe it's this Thursday?
It's Thursday, starts at four.
Starts at four, and there are three different, um, components to it, and you can attend any or all.
Correct, and if you attend all, you only have to pay for two.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I always got things from the planning federation.
Yeah, um...
Like in...
And I wonder if I could ask Sandy, is... could you?
Go.
I thought everybody... I thought they sent me...
I... I did... I did... I did too, I got it for some reason. I... I assumed everybody else did, or I would have forwarded it myself, but...
Is this coming through?
Yeah. I realize this is... this is a late...
Millbrook.
Yeah, it's a... the usual place out in Millbrook. Um, it's... it's... it's a late date, but I...
Notice.
The last notice I got, there were still plenty of room available, so if you wanna go for one of them, or... or all of them.
First one was something about historical.
Yeah.
The second one was case law update, and the third one had to do with sign regulations.
Yes.
When did that, uh...
Yes.
Notice come out, Jim?
I first saw it about weeks ago, maybe a month ago?
At least.
Eight forty-five.
Okay.
Ends at eight forty-five.
All right, so that... that, I think, takes care of all the business, so if there's nothing else, um, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Fine.